Welcome to the regular meeting of Morganton City Council, October 7th, 2024. I'd like to ask Butch McSwain to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Reverend Ethan Cromer from the youth pastor at Mount Home Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation, please.
Let's pray. God, we love you and we thank you for who you are. Lord, we come to you tonight, Lord, thanking you for your provision and protection of our lives. And, God, I know that many people have been touched in the last week by this disaster that's happened in our area. And so, God, we just thank you for how you have provided for our town. God, tonight, I'm thankful for people who have stepped up to lead in areas of government and in city ordinances and different things that are going on in our city. And, God, I'm thankful for these people who you have raised up. Lord, tonight, I pray that you would be with this meeting, God, that everything here would be honoring to you, but, Lord, that you would allow the people who you have placed in a position of authority, God, to act in the interest of your people. And, Lord, I just pray that you would use them, God, to guide the city of Morganton where it needs to be. And, God, so, Lord, I'm just praying that you would work through them. And, Lord, that you would be with this time that they are spending together tonight, doing the business that they have been called to do. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ethan. Council, we need to consider appointing an interim city attorney. Sally, did you like to say anything?
I don't know. You feel like you've vetted this one enough?
I need a motion. What's the wish of council?
Motion to appoint Louis E. Vina, Vina Jr., interim city attorney, effective October 7th, 2024.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That seems unanimous.
Thank you all. I appreciate that.
Welcome. Welcome back.
We appreciate the fact that you're willing to come back and help us on the interim basis.
Picked a great time for it, too.
You did.
Okay. Other business, we have service pins. One is John Steele, an electric manager of our engineering services for 25 years, and Rex Anis, a water resources lab supervisor for 20 years. They will get those service pins a little bit later.
They will. And I can assure you, both of those gentlemen have been very busy in the last week.
Under public advocacy, we have a proclamation, Public Power Week, and I'm gonna ask Chris Hawkins if he'll meet Brooks Kirby at the lectern to...
Can we do that after my recap?
Okay.
Because I've got that.
Okay.
If I could ask that.
We can do that.
Yeah.
And for everybody viewing the agenda, it's different than the one that you got. And in light of the last week and a half, a lot of these proclamations and awards and things, we have postponed until next month because I think now we have a different focus and things we'd like to concentrate on. Not that these are not important, and we will get them back in next month for that. So I think next, what we'd like to do is just a little bit of Hurricane Helene, I really don't like that name anymore, recap and kind of where we started last Friday and where we are today. And before I start, there's a lot of thank yous in here, there's a lot of recognitions, there's a lot of information. For anyone that I leave out who has, you know, come to, to support us and to do all those things, and there are many, I apologize upfront, sharing a few pictures with you of some of the work that has been going on. And now I want to share just some stats and some information with you, and we'll end up with just a few pictures, too. And I'm gonna try to do this without being as emotional as I am at a retirement, but I gotta tell you, this one's probably even harder than a retirement. So I'll just apologize for that upfront. So on September 27th, the city of Morganton started that morning with 5,000 Compass customers, about 8,700 electric customers, 10,700 water customers, and 7,300 sewer customers, 3,420 streetlights, 88 miles of streets, 58 traffic signals, 680 acres of parks and recreation property, including nine playgrounds and 12 parks, and a variety of other buildings and things, but they really didn't have much damage, so didn't include those. So by 9:00 a.m. on that morning, the devastation here began to mount. And I would be super remiss if I did not say all the things that I'm talking about are devastating and they are difficult, but we are very blessed and fortunate, and it is nothing like our neighbors to the west are experiencing. Okay. So on September 27th, our streets started to become impassable, there were trees falling. I'm telling all of you things that you know. Electric and Compass lines, services were very compromised, and the floodwater started rising, and a variety of other things, but those are the highlights. So I thought I'd talk a little bit, very quickly, about each of our infrastructure systems because that obviously is where we have experienced the most, not to mention the emotional trauma to people in our community and what they have been going through and the difficulties, and people who have lost their lives, their memories, all of those things. So for water, that morning, later in the day, our raw water pumps submerged completely and spent quite a bit of time underwater. And those are the pumps that pull the water in from the river to support our water system. We were forced to take our plant out of service. We were operating on generator power, and we'll get to talk about that again later in the meeting. And between 9:27 and 9:30, we worked to bring the system back up, and that was a boil water period as folks used the water that was stored in the system. And when I say something not right, y'all wave a hand at me. We depleted our storage. We installed temporary pumps in a bypass situation to try to pump water and to get our system functioning. We started working with our distribution system for the water to get that filled up so that we could then provide water. We were operating again on generator power that was iffy at best. I think that's a good description of that. Ultimately, we filled the system, we restored it, we began testing, which is a state requirement. We are still under boil water at this point. By 10:01, four days after the start of this, our water plant was operating, our system was stabilized, the boil water advisory started lifting in areas over a 24-hour period because that's a state requirement. That does not mean that everything we have is fixed and wonderful and functioning because there is a lot to come, but that's pretty miraculous. At the wastewater plant, all of our influent pumps were also submerged, and that's where we bring in the waste that we are going to, that we collect from the system and then we're going to treat. Had to wait in that case for some water to recede. We also worked, and I'm gonna recognize that the contractors and the teams from other cities that helped us in water and sewer, we had to get pumps working again, so we set up bypass pumps. So we were operating that plant on a shoestring, I'll call it. And eventually, our contractor was able to get in there, who prioritized service to us and other communities as well, removed three pumps, took them back, refurbished them, dried them, did a process, brought them back, and reinstalled all three of them. 10:04, we were operating at 25% capacity. We were starting to bring waste in from our largest employers and some of the difficult wastes that we deal with. And our largest sewer lift station, which is Silver Creek, which we're gonna talk about tonight, too, was at 50% capacity. Identified breaks, minor breaks, some minor repairs, those are ongoing, and that is gonna happen in these two systems for several months. Started inspecting outfalls, clearing trees, looking to see that our lines that went to the plant so that our customers that we serve, especially our industrial waste, could get it to the plant without pouring it into our environment. That took a lot of debris removal, a lot of assessment, and some damage repair quickly. We had crews, and we have had offers, I can't list all the offers of help that we have had from across the state. So we had crews come in from Lenore, Albemarle. Our three contractors that helped us more than I can say is Charles Underwood Incorporated, and that's our pump people, Sanford Electric at Silver Creek, and probably other places, and Bumgonner Oil to keep our generators fueled and all of those things. And by today, we were accepting waste from our three large industrial customers, and they are able to put people back to work, and our residential customers already and that kind of thing. Again, I think phenomenal and a testament to our partners, our help, and our people. So then we have Compass. So on 9:27 at 9:00 a.m., we lost service to all of our customers on the Compass system, all 5,000, except for customers at that point that had fiber and backup power, but their day was coming. We have been working around the clock with contractors and city crews to restore service, following electric, working with the electric crews, and trying to schedule how we are rebuilding this system. Today, we're about 200 customers are without service out of the 5,000. In the midst of all this, we had contractors come in because our signal and our source up on High Peak Mountain and cut a path so that we could get a propane delivery in there to keep the generator working that powers everything we need for the system to work. Again, more thank yous than I can say. Public Works, they prepared storm drains and things before the storm, clearing streets. Most of our streets were impassable, some of them you could get around barely, clearing city property, the storm drains, supporting other departments, the garage services to keep our equipment going, the warehouse to keep our materials stocked and supplied, and David Langley has done a yeoman's job, keeping our heavy equipment working, driving to Meben to pick up a knuckle boom in the midst of all of this that had been worked on. Last week, we ran a full sanitation route to our residences in order to pick up their household trash that was basically from refrigerators and freezers that hadn't been working, so some pretty nasty stuff. And yes, multiple people from multiple departments have told me throughout this whole process that Michael Chapman, our director, is a calming force with a smile. Thank you. And I might add that during this whole process, our management team and department directors and folks, there was not a day that there weren't multiple conversations, reach outs, things, asking to help other people. What can we do? I haven't heard complaints, I've seen smiles, and I've heard, how can we help? And that's awesome. And a real testament to the leadership in those departments. Parks and Rec, we had damage in all of our parks. We'll just start right there. Flooded facilities, that includes our fields, our buildings, concession operations, our maintenance shed at Catawba Meadows, but part of it is gone, and a variety of other things, and we are just now getting to that. And I know our community, so the greenway is closed. It is dangerous. People do not get on it, please. We haven't been in there yet. That's coming up on the list. We do not even know if the boardwalk behind River Village is walkable, savable, or anything. Please stay out. We have worked very hard to open up parks to give our community an opportunity, Martha's Park, MLK, Carbon City Park, the skate park, and Freedom Park, except for the tree that is currently being removed that fell on our new playground equipment. When I drove home last night around 7:00, I told Brian this morning, the basketball courts at Freedom were full, and I mean full. There were families, pets, babies, everything walking around that track. There were soccer games going on in the middle and all of that, and it was wonderful. Okay. All of our golf carts, gators, and mowers have been flooded. Our trucks and large tractors were in higher ground, and they are okay, and we are currently working out how we're gonna deal with all of those things. And we will. Develop and design. So our inspectors and our folks, Hock, too, Wendy and everyone, they have been inspecting flooded property, electrical reconnections, damage from downed trees, and everything in between, have been to all commercial areas in the city of Morganton, have visited and laid eyes on more than 50% of our residential properties and our ETJ, had to get a lot of trees and some lines cleared and moved before all of that could happen, and it is still in process. To date, we have 14 homes that have significant damage. They have a yellow tag, they are still livable, and if you own them, you can go in them. We have 14 homes that are unsafe for occupation, to be occupied. They have red tags and need a contractor and folks to work with that cleanup and how to restore that. 55 businesses in the city of Morganton have been flooded. They are all yellow tag businesses, they have all been visited by our team, and they are unsafe for the public, but they are all able to be cleaned up and reopened and are in a variety of stages of progress with that. I want to say, because I hear every day something to the opposite, there is no home or business in the city of Morganton that has been condemned. Let me say that one more time. No home, no business that has been condemned. All structural pieces of properties that have had damage have the ability to rebuild and repair if that is the choice. All permits in the foreseeable future that are relative to storm damage will have no fee associated with them from the city. They will be free, and we are working with everyone on that. Shout out to Jonathan Whitehurst, who was just here presenting our comprehensive plan to us, from Kim Lee Horn, who has himself delivered twice truckload of supplies for our utilities and public works teams. Says a lot about what people think about us. So then there's the everybody else before we get to the community house and electric, and it's all the rest of us, the administrative people, all the other, everyone has done a variety of things. Logistics support, we have become hotel room renters and operators. I'm gonna start a sideline gig with Marriott because I am skilled up now on their system even. And communication support, supply support, and everything in between. I can't list it all. We even have a team of about 10 folks in the city who have been providing laundry service to the out-of-town electric linemen and helpers that have been visiting with us. Comma, Carbon City Fire and Collet Street Recreation Center have become laundry centers. And yes, we have done their laundry right down to their underwear for them. The Morganton Community House. Okay. I'll get through this. So on Friday, September 27th, Michelle Payne, our chef, and her family did not have power, and they made it into the community house. And they began using gas grills to start serving the city crews who were working food, and to use the food at the community house that was gonna spoil at that point. That continued Friday and Saturday. By the 29th, Sharon Davis, the community house staff, Sharon Jablonsky, and a team of 130 volunteers in this community had come together, and that day, we began serving three meals a day, and that is still going on until lunchtime tomorrow. And that has been to our city crews, the 70-some linemen that have been from other communities living and commuting, living in and commuting to our community to help us, service crews, the crews in Drexel Electric that came and the Drexel Public Works Group, the Burke County EMS, the Burke County EOC, the 911 Center, and the Health Department. As of today, they have served 4,000, thanks, Chad, 4,413 meals. And that doesn't happen easily. And that has been a smiling crowd, and they have been there, and meals have been delivered in the woods to workers, meals have been delivered to plants, they have been delivered all over this community. Some of that support staff has stepped up to do that. Meter readers came in and they started delivering meals because they can't read meters. And the community folks that have been involved in that have been amazing. And not to minimize anyone's response, because it has all been great, but this last crowd, so electric. So on Friday, we started with our 8,000 customers, 9,000 customers, whatever they are, close to that number. At 2:00 p.m. that afternoon, none of them had power. And as it went on and during that process, a lot of the infrastructure we used to serve our power was mangled, destroyed, torn down. A lot of it where Duke Energy serves us, transmission, they transmit electricity to us and transfer switches to give us the power to give to people, a lot of that infrastructure was underwater and stayed underwater for some time. To say that it was devastating does not begin to describe what occurred. And I say all that to say, yet once again, I realize how fortunate we are in this community. So that day, Brooks requested mutual aid from Electricities, and to say that that crew stepped up is an understatement. So crews of linemen, tree cutters, utility service workers that respond to outages at homes, joined our electric department. And those folks came from Greenville Utilities, the city of Wilson, the city of Newton, the town of Maiden, town of Granite Falls, the city of Albemarle, the city of Gastonia, and the city of Washington, and I hope I haven't left anybody out.
Wilson.
Wilson, did I say Wilson?
It's Allen.
Okay. So, and over 70 linemen came to this community, some are still here with us today, working, and tree cutters, oh, and our, oh, Zylan, our tree trimming contract crew had a group here with us, too. See, I knew I'd leave somebody out. And they have been here, and a lot of them have commuted to not put pressure on the hotel rooms, because I'm gonna tell you how this works. There were no hotel rooms. When storms come in, Duke Energy takes everything that is available, and you gotta beg, borrow, cheat, and steal to get them. And I ended up on a phone call with David Bennett, who owns the local Fairfield, and folks with Marriott in Pittsburgh, in order to be able to get rooms. And then we, and Sanja's the other, she's going to work for Quality and Choice Hotels, and I'm going to work for Marriott. And we ended up getting some rooms there, too, and we ended up taking in the Shelby crew. So Shelby was devastated, a Wilson crew was working there. They didn't have accommodations there that were adequate, and we ended up taking them here in some of ours and sharing and doing all kinds of things. The materials, so getting the materials and getting it all here, Electricities helped with that. It was a yeoman's work again. The city of Statesville delivered to us multiple occasions, High Point delivered to us, Wilson delivered to us multiple occasions, and this is everything from poles to wire to small things, to arms, to transformers, to a variety of other things. I've learned a whole new language this week. And Greenville delivered to us, Gastonia, over and over again, the stuff kept coming in and kept coming in, and that's amazing. What we know, and these numbers may change, over 100 poles and 200 crossarms have been replaced to date. Lines totally rebuilt, entire lines and services in entire sections of our community. Priorities were the hospital, the water plant, and the sewer plant. The hospital had power restored by 9:00 p.m. the day of the storm. That's amazing. The water plant by Sunday, September 29th, the sewer plant by the 30th. And that took a lot, and those were initial focuses because that's how that has to work. Then we switched to rebuilding the major lines and then going to the secondary lines and now working on service drops and homes and all the things that are involved in that. And our inspectors have been sitting in the trucks and riding with the electric crews, both ours and others, around the clock that we've been working on this in order to be able to do that more efficiently at the homes once we could get there. And our D and D admin people to issue the permits and to keep up with all of that, and Jennifer in electric, and I could go on and on and on. As of September 30th, we had 5,000 outages still remaining. October 2nd, that was down to 2,500. October 5th, 1,800, and October the 7th today, less than 100. That has probably dropped now because I put these numbers in a little bit earlier. We have a list of resources here, those will be on our website. They will be made available for folks. It includes the SBA that we heard about earlier. Those are also available. The Chamber has put that out, the county has put that out. We'll share it with everybody that we know because people need to know how to get help, and this is gonna be a long haul. The last thing I'll say is that Saturday night, the 28th, at about 10 o'clock, I was texting with Rob Winkler, and I got this text from him. And I think it says it all. He said, "We got good people, we will chip away, and we'll be back on top again." And he was right. And I can't say anymore people because I can't believe I've held this together right now. And the next thing, and I still can't shut up because there's something else to say. So the Public Power Week proclamation, we've kinda scrapped reading those words tonight because I think we've just said them. And I think that we need to just present it to Brooks.
I agree.
Ask Chris Hawkins if he'll approach along with Brooks. So, and it reads, "Now that be it resolved, the city of Morganton hereby proclaims, October 7th through the 11th, as Public Power Week in the city, and commends its observation to all citizens."
It's an honor to present this proclamation to you. I think it's very appropriate. And I'll just add one thing, seeing all those trucks and things coming, it must have felt like maybe being in the old west when the cavalry was coming.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I just wanna say a few words, if you don't mind. I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the city manager for recognizing Public Power Week. And Hurricane Helene has effectively demonstrated the benefits of being a public power utility. Being public power means we provide local control when making important decisions. Being public power means we provide local control when making important decisions based on our needs, not what Duke or Charlotte or Raleigh may want. But we're also connected to a broadband and network, uh, cities and towns across the country, giving us access to a great support system. And this system has been on total display for the last 10 days. As we had tree, line crews and tree crews from other public utilities come help us restore our grid that had been severely damaged. And being a public power also gives us access to equipment and supplies from other cities when we had to replace so much of our damaged system. So instead of waiting weeks or days for material, we're waiting on hours. We will have a lobby, we'll have a lobby listen at me. We'll have a table in the lobby with brochures telling the story of public power. We have hats and t-shirts and pencils and other items to give away to the public. We have energy kits to give and also have offering free energy audits upon request starting next week.
Or maybe even the weekend.
Fortunately, the same storm that came upon us has delayed arrival of some of these items. We'll also be showing videos on the city website of what our crews do on average and energy-saving tips that people can use to control their usage. But overall, just like to thank you again.
Brooks, thanks so much. I'd like to call on the councilman.
May we just also say, I can't imagine going through this without the leadership that we had.
Right.
Sally, thank you.
Absolutely.
Always a team.
I know, but thank you.
I'd like to call, uh, Butch, Butch, forward and, uh, Israel. If you'll come forward, uh, for Fire Prevention Week. And this proclamation reads that, um, October 6th through 12th of 2024 is Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all in our community to check for fire hazards and to install, test, and replace household fire alarms during Fire Prevention Week, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Morganton Fire and Emergency Service. Butch.
Hearing all the sirens all week. I know you guys have been on it, and thank you very much for your part.
Yes, sir. Very well. Thank you all very much.
Do you want to say anything about checking smoke detectors or?
No, the commonality there is each and every year is pretty common. Uh, the smoke detectors and cooking fire stuff is, is pretty self-explanatory. Uh, just the biggest thing there for us is just to make sure they're operable, make sure that they're there. Um, I just looked at stats this week and, uh, we've had, we've installed 13 smoke detectors in homes here in the City of Morganton since July 1st, and 10 out of 13 of those was because there was not any detectors present in the home, and three of them, the other three was because the detector was not functioning properly. So if you don't have detectors, then we as the fire department, we can't respond to you efficiently. And, uh, early notification is the most critical thing for us to be able to help people out. So just please, uh, please take that serious and check those.
Chief, thank, thank you so much. Next on our agenda is an announcement about leaf collection.
So leaf collection is suspended currently. Everything that we had said, so obviously, and, and this gives me a moment to talk to about the debris removal, the contract with FEMA, and that kind of thing. So obviously, everywhere, there is lots of storm debris and lots of trees and, and brush and the rest of that, and it is stacked up. There's other debris as well. The city has signed on to the contract with FEMA with the county. Those contractors and assessors have come, and this is only a residential service. They have been tagging and geocoding those piles. And the county is standing up a map, a GIS map, and it was either to be today, and I don't know if it got done, or tomorrow, that is tracking these piles. So you can go on and see your pile at some point, or your piles. And next week, late this week, early next week, we expect the haulers to come in. And using that information, they are gonna come and start clearing the right-of-ways and picking up the debris. It's not a one-time thing, they're gonna make at least four passes over a period of time. That period of time will be at least two months, that may extend up to 180 days, it may extend to six months. And, and, and so you don't have to have it all right now, they're gonna come back and they're gonna do this. That being said, our leaf collection and where you put them is a challenge. And we don't want you to put them out in the street in the right-of-way and clog up storm drains. Because if we get rain with everything where it is, that is not a good plan, and we don't wanna go back there. So we ask for your patience in that, and if you can get rid of your leaves some other way, please do. And for the meantime, you'll have to do the best you can, and we'll do the best we can. And later on, when we get this figured out in a different way, we'll let you know.
Thank you, Sally. Um, upcoming events, there's art in the hall, October, November, it's gonna be some, uh, from the Western North Carolina Sculpture Center with aluminum pour. Farmer's Market Wednesday and Saturdays, those farmers who can get there will be available Wednesday and Saturday. Our third Thursday Art Crawl is gonna be October 17th, please check the city website. 2024 Made Competition is gonna be Friday, October the 18th at Collet Street Recreation Center.
Is that still on?
I think that was postponed.
Was that postponed? So at this point, I would say about all of these things, folks, these are the dates coming up, it is all subject to change. So, so, so find out, make a phone call, call us, do something before you make your plans.
Halloween Spooktacular again is scheduled for October 31st from 3:00 to 6:00 in downtown Morganton, and the Performing Arts Center, the Barricade Boys on Saturday, October 19th, and Canaan Smith on Friday, November the 1st. Sally, do we have a municipal power update?
I think we've covered that.
Under consent agenda, we have four items. Sally, would you cover those?
We do. Um, minutes from the September 9th meeting, uh, a list of public safety handguns that we are declaring a surplus in trading in, and you have those by serial number, and that will be with a, a approved, um, guns dealer to, to, to get rid of those in, in the proper way that we're supposed to. I'm sorry, my words are not coming, people. And budget amendment to appropriate fund balance for the purchase of equipment for public safety, which will include some new weapons to replace the ones we're trading in. That 95,384 is coming from the private donations that we received at the end of last budget year. And then approval and agreement with Western Piedmont College, um, for stormwater agreement at the new emergency services training center.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Like to have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, under new business, a consideration, uh, award of a contract for public safety vehicles. Uh, Sally?
And, and that includes public safety, uh, cars, and also a new fire truck that we talked about a long time ago. And now it seems like years ago. Um, so we have received bids to finance these items, and we received bids from three banks and are asking you to, number one, approve a resolution authorizing issuing installment financing in an amount of 2,000, $2,696,489 to First National Bank in Pennsylvania. They were our lowest responsible responsive bidder at an interest rate, I believe, of 3.93. Did I get that right? And, which is awesome. And then a motion to award a contract for financing these vehicles. And then finally, a budget amendment in the amount of 323,823 dollars to accept the money that we're borrowing that we hadn't budgeted for.
What's the wish of council?
A motion to approve a resolution authorizing issuance of installment financing in the amount of $2,696,489 to First National Bank of Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Butch. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please.
Make a motion to award a contract for financing the purchases of public safety vehicles and fire apparatus to First National Bank.
Thank you, Chris. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Last motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment in the amount of 323,823 dollars to accept an increase in installment purchase proceeds to recognize insurance reimbursement and appropriate retained earnings for the insurance reimbursement received in previous fiscal year '24 for the purchase of public safety vehicles and fire apparatus.
Thank you, Chris. Have a motion, have a second.
A second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a approval of a contract for professional engineering services. Sally?
Yes, these are engineering services with our contract engineering firm, Southeastern. And it is for an amount not to exceed $15,000 for engineering work on delivery for a substation.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve and authorize a contract with Southeastern Consulting Engineers Incorporated to provide professional engineering services for the delivery for substation project not to exceed $15,000, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract in any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Wendy. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's see, next on our agenda is a budget amendment for retained earnings. Sally?
Yes. So budgeting and using out of our savings, $18,620. That is our share of cost for the regional effort to challenge Charlotte's IBT request. Um, that is all being handled through the COG by a group of local governments participating. This will cover legal services and lobbying services.
And this is for that inter-basin transfer, correct?
It's correct.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $18,620 to appropriate retained earnings for professional services to pay Western Piedmont Council of Governments for the City of Morganton's share of the cost to challenge Charlotte's IBT requests.
Thank you, Butch. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, the consideration of award to contract for emergency purchase of a generator.
I told you we'd be talking about it. So we talked about it last time too. So the generator out there had an explosion months ago. And at the time, because we're required to have that and with a 52-week delivery time to get a replacement generator and all of that, Electric did their magic and basically rerouted service to the water department. And it's worked great most of the time. Maybe not in the last week or so. Right? So we now deem this to be even more of an emergency even before last week, but most definitely now. And would ask that you approve us buying, because the solution that we're using to make do, which is not making do, is over $21,000 a month. We have sourced a generator, we can get it in a matter of weeks, and the insurance company is reimbursing us baby, basically the entire cost. You approved those funds last meeting so we could get in line to reserve this for us. And, and so now I'm just asking you to award the contract with power generation to provide the equipment.
Uh, what's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract with Power Generation and Control Incorporated for the emergency purchase of a generator for the City of Morganton Water Treatment Plant in the amount not to exceed $1,305,010 and 50 cents to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract in any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion, have a second.
Second, and not a penny more than that, right?
Unless it costs 50 cent more, and I think we'll find it.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is the consideration of a contract for the Silver Creek Sewer Pump Station Improvement Project, Sally.
This is an old topic, one that means even more now, like most things. So that is our workhorse, as you know, and we've been talking about this for years. We have finally gotten bids, and we received formal bids on September 17th. We received six bids, uh, by qualified contractors. And we are asking that you award a contract to Brushy Mountain Builders in, in the amount included not to exceed $5,995,730. Authorize us to, to sign all the stuff. And as soon as you do that, then we're gonna have a meeting with them and our engineers and folks, and we're gonna come back to you with a change order, and we're gonna look for some more money because we're probably gonna do a little redesign and make some things different, even over and above what we had already done. So this is part one, we'll be back with part two soon.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract with Brushy Mountain Builders for the construction of the Silver Creek Sewer Pump Station Improvements Project in the amount not to exceed $5,995,730, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract in any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. Have a motion, have a second. Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, council, we have one other motion, uh, in our agenda, but I think there's a handout that goes with that.
There's a budget amendment with that as a second item.
Okay, so we'll do the one in the agenda packet first. Uh, Sally, this is a work order, please.
So last month, you, you allowed us to accept $450,000 as a zero-interest loan from the Department of Environmental Quality for some lead and copper, um, pipe identification and engineering work all around that. We did that contingent upon LGC approval, we received that October 1st. And so now we would like for you to approve the contract with Garver Engineering to allow us to spend the dollars.
What's the wish of council?
Mayor, since I made the motion last month, I think I'd like to do this one.
Spending a lot of money tonight.
Motion to approve work order 2024-01 with Garver Engineering to provide services related to the lead service line this year, this month, inventory and investigation project not to exceed $450,000 and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute such contract in any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Wendy, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I know Butch wants to do the next one because that's actually the budget amendment, accepting the money.
Okay, it is a budget amendment to accept the money. What's the wish of council?
I make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $450,000 to accept loan proceeds from NCDQ for the lead service line project.
Feels good, doesn't it?
I'll second that. I have a motion, have a second. Thank you so much, he's quick on the right side. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to, to close with a few words. Uh, I think probably the, the phrase I heard most are the three words, "Are you okay?" This time from a lot of people. And people, and "Can I help you?", but really, "Are you okay?" And I think a lot of people came together who normally don't come together or see each other very much, and it's just, again, my editor of the paper, I'm, I'm real proud of the community, I'm proud of our employees, and the people who came to put it together. Any further business to come before?
If I could just add a little bit to that.
Please.
Mayor, uh, as some of you know, uh, my home was affected by, by this, this storm. And just seeing the outpouring of community support, uh, it's been overwhelming, not just for me, but for my friends and neighbors and, and others. Uh, families, individuals, churches who provided meals every day. As our mayor said, people who came up, you know, family, friends, people whose names I still don't know. What can I do to help you? I mean, that's so humbling. There's so much good in the world, and, and we don't, we fail to see it sometimes. All the calls and texts, checking on, uh, folks who were impacted. And, and as, as Sally mentioned earlier, the city's response has been phenomenal, and it starts at the top. It truly does, no matter what you say, it starts at the top. And one of the things that I've enjoyed being on city council is seeing, and being just a small part of this amazing team that we have that serves its citizens, not only serving it because that's what they do, but because they care. And I see that all the time, and especially during this crisis. I mean, you had your family out on our street helping my friends and neighbors, your husband, your son. I saw each one of you out on our street going and checking on everybody. Uh, and, and so many more from the city, Wendy and Mike Fincher going door-to-door, Michael Chapman being there all day Saturday, Sally was there all day Saturday with the National Guard and, and the knuckle boom trucks and the dumpsters and, and picking up debris and, and lifting spirits. One of the things that came to mind was... Uh, one of the things that came to mind was despite all this devastation, uh, a word that kept coming through to me was hope. And there's a quote from the Archbishop Desmond Tutu that said, "Hope is being able to see there is light despite all the darkness." And I've seen that light these past ten days. And that light's there all the time, but I think in tragedy, we see it even more. And, and my hope for our community is we see that light every day going forward. There's so many good stories out there to be told, and I hope they get told. Um, and for me personally, I can't thank everyone enough for your support and your thoughts and your prayers. And, um, just thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, thank you, Chris.
Nothing else? We are adjourned.